Evening Dayton, we're going to call the regular meeting of the Dayton Board of Health to order. It's Thursday, October 8th at 6:00 PM. We're in the Old Town Hall upper level meeting room. As a reminder, this meeting is being video and audio recorded for cable broadcast and internet voicing at www.dayton-ma.gov.
Loyal minions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands my nation and my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
New business. If you're discussing that curbside trash recycling bins. It's my understanding there's been some discussion outside of here publicly that was concerned or questioned as to if it would be possible to get trash recycling bins instead of utilizing the bags as we currently are. I believe that this question had been brought to the Board of Health by the Board of Selective Chair. So at this point Brett's not here, but just to a quick recap, we're currently in a three year contract with Borges Trucking. This was put out to bid about a year and a half ago. And before we made a request for bids, this board did do quite a bit of discussion regarding the bins and some research into having the bin service instead of bags. The biggest constraint at the time is the upfront cost regarding the bins. I believe it was $150 per household, if my memory serves me right, for the cost of the bins, just the bins themselves. The other cost increase was going to be in the service provider for the curbside pickup. The cost for those businesses that are able to provide the vehicles that had the hydraulic arms to lift the bins all came in at a much higher bid than what we got from Borges Trucking. So that being said, I don't think that this board, as opposed to reevaluating the option of bins, once the contract will be going back up for renewal, again, it'll probably be in about a year and a year and a half, will be requesting some bids again. And certainly I think that it would be wise to just investigate the option of bins once again. So that being said, it's not off the table, but given that we are in a contract with Borges Trucking, and it's my understanding that they don't have the trucks that can accommodate the bin service with the hydraulic arms, you know, at this point, we will be remaining with the bags instead of bins. But we will certainly look at the option again near the end of Borges' contract.
Yeah, I agree. He doesn't have the equipment, so it doesn't, it's not even worth looking into it right now.
My feeling is, well, I agree with you that we should look at it going forward. But under the circumstances, this is not a priority for us, I believe. At this point, we're still dealing with COVID and the phases as we go through from the state. I think we should recommend to the Board of Selectmen that a solid waste committee be established. And that way there, you know, we have all the numbers already, they can carry it forward. Our health agent is behind with his Title V inspections, he's doing stormwater inspections, and we're still in the middle of COVID, even though COVID cases have been dropping. Once a phase comes into effect, we still have to do inspections all over again. There's just a whole lot of work involved. So that's why I would recommend that we suggest to them a solid waste committee be established.
Do you know why this even came up? How it came up?
I do.
I do. I believe it came out on Facebook about why we even have second town trash bags, why you can use food barrels and eliminate the old bag system. And that was how it all started. It was like, well, if you analyze the price of the trash bags that we're paying for, and how much it costs per household, wouldn't it be just cheaper to eliminate the bags and just raise everybody's taxes? And that was kind of how it all started.
Some towns have the bins and the pay as you throw as well. They have the bags.
Yeah, we pay for it beyond the bag.
So I think Freetown has the bins, part of their service, so they have, and they still have those green bags.
There was, one of the arguments on Facebook was that they wanted to eliminate the plastic that's involved. But the plastic is green, and we're still going to use plastic. You can't just throw your trash into a bin. It's got to be in a bag.
Any of the providers that do have bins a requirement, and I know from research when we investigate this, that the trash still has to be in bags. You can't just...
So it's not allowed to be plastic?
Correct.
Yeah, the bag.
And just as it, sorry. And one other note, when we were putting bids out, Republic was either in the middle of or just starting a strike. Republic is one of the providers that was able to provide the hydraulic arms on the trucks. That being said, when we looked at not only the costs of the bids we received from the couple providers, we looked at their reputation and the quality of service which they provided of the towns that these other companies provided to. And Borges still came out on top. I know a lot of people did send in comments regarding Borges and the outstanding service that they provided at the town of Dayton for, I believe, decades.
How many years?
Forty.
Yes, and he's in the industry jobs.
So actually, that was my exact comment. And the reason I want to bring that up is if, I think the committee's a good idea because you can actually look at the numbers and see if it makes sense or not. But I do know that from another municipality I was with, that you can't convert a rear packer trash truck to have hydraulic assist arms on the rear. It's not automatic. It still requires someone to place the bin on the hydraulic column. But we actually converted rear packer trucks to have the hydraulic assist. So knowing what you just said about Borges Trucking, I think Borges would still have a legitimate stake in the game if you were willing to add these to its trucks. So I don't think Borges would be pushed out if we decided to do this. I just think you would have to modify his truck slightly in order to do it.
And sad more, and I think I spoke to you about prior, it doesn't mean, but I want to bring it up. Swansea and other communities have a one man show as far as trash goes. They have a bucket in front of the truck. They have one driver. The cab is in front. He gets out, he puts up the trash, throws it in the bucket in the front. When that failure, he gets in the truck, goes the next one, fills up, he just dumps it into the back. The arm goes up the back of the truck. So there's a lot involved, more than I think they're realizing over at the next building, which is why I, at this point, am going to make a motion. We send the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that they consider a solid waste committee be established.
With one of our members or one of us as part of it?
With the, with the representative of the Board of Health.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or who carries? Next, under new business review, discuss an Act 2477 Maple Swamp Building Commissioners' Enforcement Action.
Thank you. So without going in the past and in the event to bring things along the way we need to tonight, I will start where I became involved. I had a building permit out there to renovate the house that had sustained fire damage, so I had been knocking forth to the property quite some, quite a amount of time over the last several months, and I didn't see much activity there. However, as the house near the end of completion, I started to receive calls that there were more and more dogs on the property during the daytime hours. No one was residing there, but the dog activity had increased significantly. So collectively, Agent Pilling, the Animal Control Officer, Town Administrator, and I visited the site. There were a couple of different complaints. And I observed six dogs on the property that day, and there were other farm animals, horses, goats, et cetera. There was no finding of neglect on any of the animals. There was, however, and I'll defer to talk, Mr. Pilling rather, on some of the border health concerns. But what I did notice is that it seemed like the owner of the property was visiting the site during the day with multiple dogs. Whatever he is doing was unknown, but it became apparent to me that some activity was going on there that might constitute the definition of a business. So in my travels, I went by the property. I did see dogs. I continued to take calls from neighboring property owners saying that there was still quite a bit of activity, and what they described to me was actually dog training going on. Agent Pilling went back to follow up on the border health violations. He told me there was a total of nine dogs the day that he returned to the property. So it became clear to me that the property owner is bringing dogs from elsewhere onto the property, some may be owned by him, some not, and operating a service business, be it dog sitting, dog training, whatever. But it's still a business. It's not allowed by residential neighborhood. Before I sent my violation notice out, I called a clerk to find out how many dogs were registered to the property and licensed. There were zero dogs registered to that property. That means every dog being brought in is not belong on the property, it's registered or licensed somewhere else. So that clearly defines that business, some type of business operation is being run there. Some may be his dogs, some may be clients' dogs. I don't know. So I cited the property as operating an illegal business. I have not heard back from the property owner as of yet. They have 30 days to appeal. But I want this board to know that I intend to follow this right through if it means using town council, using the courts, to cease the business operations that are going on there. There's no allowance for it. It's not legal. And in my opinion, if you were to apply for relief, I would speak out against it because to me it's not the type of neighborhood that that type of business should be located in. That said, I do want some input from your board so I can respond to the complaint in support of it. Because the illegal business activity I have jurisdiction over, which I've now addressed, the number of dogs on the property at one time needs to be addressed by the correct body, and the leash law needs to be addressed by the correct body because the complaints are saying that dogs are leaving the property, going onto the streets, into neighboring houses, et cetera, et cetera. So educate me, tell me who needs to be called in cases like this so I can let all the property owners up there know, hopefully through the camera tonight, who has enforcement action over those two things.
So I believe that, you can correct me if I'm wrong. So they'd both be Stacy Curry, the Animal Control Officer, Animal Inspector. As far as the leash law, definitely be Animal Control, which falls under police now. Several months ago, the Animal Control duties were taken away from the Board of Health and given to the Police Department. As far as the kennel aspect, there's no kennel permit, so I would, I would think that Stacy should be going after them. I believe the kennel falls under Animal Inspector? Or is that still under Animal Control?
So yeah, Animal Control.
Animal Control. So I would say both be Animal Control and be policed and...
And the Animal Control Officer now reports to the Police Chief?
Correct.
Okay. So then for everybody at home listening, I'm not sure if you're seeing me or not seeing me, if you have dogs that don't belong to you on your property, they're not leashed. And I'm telling you now that the property on Maple Swamp Road at 2477 does not, 2477 is correct. Does not have a business license, should not be operating, and does not have a kennel license, and should not have more than three dogs at any given time. Your call should be directed to the Police Department, and they should be able to respond accordingly. Okay, thank you.
I find it disrespectful on part of the property owner to even consider this again after what transpired up there and the number of dogs and the pack mentality that's believed to have caused that incident. There's just no excuse for this.
Agreed.
I have a comment, but I can't comment because now it's under the jurisdiction of the police department, so I'm going to be quiet here. Well, I'll say, and it should have been mandated that he no longer has dogs on the property at all under these circumstances.
Well, I, you know, I do know there's a history there. I try not to let my actions get caught up in that, but there is definitely business activity going on there. There's actually a commercial vehicle that's driven there every day that brings the dogs, so there's no doubt in my mind there's commercial activity, and I tend to see it through and not allow operations to continue there. And I just encourage everyone else who has complaints, I don't mind taking the calls, but I can't do anything about it. I don't have the authority, so give the Police Department a call and they should follow through.
Do you know if Stacy has followed up on this already?
She did not accompany Agent Pilling when he returned, so I don't know specifically if she, did she go with you when you went back? Okay, I'm sorry. Then I'll let Agent Pilling speak.
So the first time we went there, there was trash all over the property. I started from, it wasn't in order. It was a, hey, clean this up, you get two weeks to clean it up, or I'm going to hit you with an order. We went back two weeks later for a compliance check, and Stacy came with me. And he had been cleaning up the trash. It wasn't completely gone. He was getting a dumpster. Dumpsters are a little delayed right now because everybody's doing construction everywhere, so he was making headway. That's what we observed, and I had dogs, and I don't know what actions she was taking as a result of it. I know she saw the dogs, but...
I don't know whether she did or didn't, but the calls are still coming in to just not my office, but the staff's office, so obviously either he's disregarding her notice or the notice wasn't given.
We brought Animal Control, ECO's under police, so...
Okay, thank you.
And Todd, when are you going back?
We scheduled two weeks from last week, so not this...
It's, it should be next Thursday.
Next Thursday, yes.
And if it's, by then, if it's nine, then I just order...
Oh, right. He knows that. He, like, he was taking, like, let's say he cleaned up 50% of it, but there was stuff all over the...
I understand. If you can work with somebody, that's great, but if it falls through, then...
So we don't know if the chief is aware of any of this?
I'm going to make sure of it tomorrow now that I know the Police Department's jurisdiction.
Yeah.
I didn't want to make any assumptions until I spoke to the board. So now that I know that, I'll call Chief McDonald tomorrow.
Yeah, we'd, under the circumstances of what transpired previously, I think we need to, somebody needs to stay on top of it.
I intend it. My fault. I can't do anything else.
You can do anything, yeah. You can only handle the business aspect.
Thank you.
Next, on new business review, discuss an Act Animal Inspector 2020 Inspections and Job Duties. I believe there was a question regarding the Animal Inspector and conducting the barn and stable inspections. And I believe Mr. Pye had a discussion with the state Animal...
Animal Health was also there, and she, well, not anymore, but she was in that position and also dealt with animal quarantine. When the incident of the dog bite, what's happened? Basically, the Animal Inspector inspections relating year animal barn or semi-animal, whatever it was, had been suspended as due to COVID, as have our food inspections. So that's the same thing. And it will probably be next year before they come back. So they're also not maintaining a barn book for this year. However, if there becomes an issue where there is a problem with any property that has an existing barn commit or does not have a barn commit, and there's an issue, yes, the Animal Inspector should go out and inspect and see what's going on and take the necessary enforcement action. I had asked when it was going to be over, and she really didn't know, but, you know, one of the other things she said, we talked about quarantine of animals, and she was in charge of that before she just got promoted. The new person hasn't come in yet. But it is recommended, and we've already talked about this, it's recommended that the Board of Health receive the quarantine forms because it could become a matter of public health on a dog bite. So I'm going to suggest this evening that we talk with Chief McDonald about that and request that we receive quarantine forms going forward and any reports associated with what has transpired in a dog bite, with the investigation revealed. I think it's pretty important that we do know going forward, you know, what's, what the status is of the situation that caused the problem, just to avoid any future problems with the same animal or another. So that being said, we have, again, we have, we can request these forms. They are not mandated though by the state. It is recommended that we receive them. So I think one of us, whether it be the health agent or Ross or myself, can reach out to Chief McDonald and request that we receive these things as a matter of public health. But right now, everything's pretty much on hold due to COVID, so...
So I think, so two things, one, also going forward, once the inspections do or are allowed to again occur for the barns and stables, I think we just need to ensure that the Animal Inspector is completing the reports of the barn book in a manner that the state requires, you know, there's been concern over the barn books.
Yeah, I would certainly agree with that. There's a few other things that we discussed that I don't think it'd be appropriate to bring up publicly in a meeting without a Animal Control Officer here, so not Animal Control, I mean, the Animal Inspector. So we'll, we'll speak to Chief McDonald and try to get the information. From what I understand now, he does not get reports of any forms, and I think you might be able to verify this, Ross, that, because she has her own file, which I don't think should be the way it is because if something happens to the personal files, then there's no record of what's going on.
I know this was a question years ago, before this board was created, regarding location of files and just the way it was done, you know, except files, a lot of them weren't in Town Hall because, you know, they were ongoing and they were, you know, in a personal file. You know, I think we're past that period now, and, you know, we certainly have a very good office set up, and I think that those forms should be coming here. And they are public record. If we get a public record request, we need to be able to provide that within 10 days, and I think we need those. I will say, if there's a dog bite and a person is transported to the hospital or at some point they go to the doctor's office, that medical facility should be reporting that dog bite, where those forms go at this point.
I used to get them faxed in.
Yeah.
Where does that go?
Or mailed. Morton will usually mail them, but where they go, you know, I'd just be curious.
Are we still getting them?
I haven't gotten one recently.
Okay.
Yeah, normally they send it right to the Board of Health Office.
Well, they were going to Town Hall, and then they would put them in our mailbox. So whether they're just putting them in Stacy's mailbox now, or the chief, or maybe we haven't gotten any, but I haven't gotten any since. There's probably a hold is on your desk.
It seemed, it would seem to make sense that since the changes were made, they're probably going into the chief's mailbox.
You know, it's just a matter of making a copy of something and sending it over to the Board of Health, you know? I mean, the report should be completed and the form should be completed. Make a copy of it and send it to us. That's all we're asking. So I think when we speak to the chief, that will probably, you know, come to fruition that we start getting copies again, so hopefully.
I think a little, just a little bit of a learning curve, you know, for police because this is all, I'm just tossing them. And that was two separate parts, some communication, just a little learning curve on the...
Sure, that would be a while if you didn't ask for it.
Anyway, that's my story. I'm sticking to it.
Any other, no? Very good. Moving on to old business. Review discuss an Act 800 Center Street.
You can start.
Todd?
So you called last meeting. We talked about the fact that we issued them, or they have a tank that the sewer is going to, they're calling it, they're calling it a tight tank, but it didn't make requirements, a tight tank. And our order required them to bring the tight tank up to the code for a tight tank as a temporary thing for this housing unit above the garage. They have not complied with that. It's been a potential amount of times, over a year and a half, I think. So this board said, let's send them a letter and find out where they're at with what's going on. So don't be holding any comments with us and bring us up to date. I have not had any time to write that letter over the last two, three, four weeks now. Time is flying by too fast for COVID, so I haven't had a chance to write that letter yet. But there's another...
So at the same time that the border health matter came up 18 months ago, I had some code violations on the property. The house, main house was vacated. No one is to live there. The apartment had some building code concerns that were addressed. They pulled a permit, did what they needed to do to install a second means of egress and handrails, et cetera, et cetera. So to that extent, I had no standing violations. However, I did receive a call from the Police Department last week that asked me to drive by and take a look, and when I did, I was a little astounded as to what I saw. It seems that in addition to the border health matters, the number of unregistered vehicles, it looks like there might even be some type of repair shop going on. And then, of course, the police have other matters there that they had concerns about. So now it's back to the forefront, and now I intend to cite the property on some zoning violations. And I thought it would be a good time for myself and the Board of Health to work in the latter way to notify the property owner of X, Y, and Z, whatever it is that they're violating. And then we can just work on together.
So I, I think, you know, a final notice, I would probably include in that notice that, you know, per Title V, you have two years to comply, and that two years is, is over. And that basically this matter becomes a criminal matter with the courts. And, you know, you can give them a certain time, you know, if you want 30 days or something like that, to make one final effort, come in, pull a permit, and get, get this work done, or we will be filing within the court system criminally.
Would this be a letter you could assist with writing? My time seems to be...
We'll just have, I'll have to look at the whole file and see what we left.
Yeah, we can get it.
Yeah, even if you want to give it to me, I can, I ran a couple of them in the past. I can look off one of my old ones for this.
Yeah.
You've done this before, right?
Yeah, yeah. So I...
I'm not trying to call it off work, it's just like...
No, that's why I, like, I, I've done it before, you know, so...
Probably have a template already.
A couple, yeah. The only concern I have, I shouldn't say concern, is where with COVID and the courts, their current status. their current status. So we could file, but it may take quite a while. Not that it, you know, our due diligence is, is done and, and we've done what we can. You know, and again, it becomes a, a, a court issue and a criminal matter, so.
And even when you visit, you could see if you could, see, try to get an idea if, if you would actually do it. Do the work.
If, if you do talk to them, just say, you know, that, that we have tried to work with you and, and, you know, we have gone above and beyond and, and, and we did, we've had many meetings. You know, we, we allowed the, the tight tank issue, which they didn't comply with. This point, we, we have to follow the, the law, Title V, as we would any other property owner in, in the town and, and the law says you have two years or we will file in court. And that's, that's where we're at, so. Say, you know, yeah, yeah, say 30 days, then we'll be, this will be court, court action. It's easy to file in court, so if it gets to that, I know, we might help you.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
No, 30 days is good, 'cause everything that I listed now, there's a 30 day response time.
Yeah, I'm not gonna give you a date, 'cause I, you know what I mean, it's Thursday now and, you know, the holiday Monday. But whatever, whenever you, you know, the next week or so, whenever you get a chance, I, I would give them 30 days. I think that's fair. To at least be substantially working on it. And that's not coming in and saying, I think I wanna pull a permit. It's coming in, pulling a permit and working on, you know, actually seeing an alarm on there and, you know, not just, oh, yeah, we're gonna comply, no, like, you, you need to get it done.
They need a pumping contract, too.
Correct.
Yeah, because based on the water usage, they're using a lot more water. They, they haven't gotten a single pumping record, so.
Maybe that's why they're basing this one.
Could be.
No pumping records?
Do a taste test.
Not, well, not that we've noticed, it's coming through. So, but they should be pumping it, we, we.
Because they're supposed to be pumping.
If it's a tight tank.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Modified.
That's a great point.
Anything else?
I don't have a plan.
Okay.
So you're gonna do the notice in my career.
We'll send you the old letters that we got and then if you.
Yeah, yeah, just get me all that.
And if you don't have time, we can send it to Kevin and he can go, so. 'Cause I know you would like to kind of block this, it's a while, so.
Yeah, it's like, I mean, if I already have 90% of it done, it's just a matter of checking some dates and.
Yeah, or even if you send us a sample letter.
Okay.
Making it together is the hard part.
Yeah, it'd be nice if they had the template and they.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get it mostly done for you and then I'll just send it, just a tweak, if that works for you. You know.
Well, that's fine, too, like I said.
Yeah, just change the dates and like that, you know.
Change the hours, too.
Make sure I put the right.
Thank you.
Next on old business B, you discuss an act, COVID-19. Policies and anticipated expenses, that's number one.
Um, so anticipated expenses, we have forelooked through the rest of the year. CARES Act is still paying for stuff from the administrative assistant and itself and the town nurse. That goes through the end of December at least. So, um, 'cause all three of us have been getting additional hours because of COVID every week. It's been nonstop. And so we just wanted to make sure we were covered for our overages. And talking with the selectmen last night, it appears that the CARES Act is, and FEMA is picking up debt, so we don't need to worry about the additional expenses as long as they're COVID related. So we are being asked by the town accountant to do an explanation of what these overages are in general terms as we go along. You know, meeting with the schools, meeting with construction sites, sports teams, whatever it was, and just weddings, et cetera, et cetera, and telling them what they need to do. So we have to put that together for the town accountant. But he, he is tracking the times, he's doing the CARES reporting, CARES Act and FEMA, so we don't have to do any reporting, so.
That's good.
I think all the money out, 'cause we had discussed prior, just the other evening at our meeting, that we were drawing, correct? 'Cause they wanted us to definitely suspend.
So I was just gonna say.
For salary, yeah.
Yeah, so there, there were five, five articles that, that we had drafted. And this was discussed at our last meeting, uh, last regular meeting. For the fall special town meeting, Tuesday, we had a very brief meeting for a couple minutes that, uh, just due to the, the deadline, they had to be in yesterday, correct? We had moved forward with, with five articles, two of which were, were, um, one, one was, was for, for solid waste, one was for some, uh.
Tub grinder.
Thank you, tub grinder, probably the transfer station. The other three were related to our overages due to, to COVID expenditures. And last night, the board of directors meeting, those three were, were removed. Um, won't be moving forward. Again, as, as the accountant had, had mentioned, and I, I noticed also that just to let it go and move that account to negative and, and make it the money, it'll be, be punished, so.
What was increased, Todd, the tub grinder or the?
Tub grinder was increased because we only had like 3,000 that we asked for. And I think they done, because there were a lot of stumps, that they upped it to like 4,000 or something like that. But I don't know what the final number was, I was having trouble hearing through the meeting.
You know, it kinda makes sense, 'cause we're in hurricane season. If we have enough now there to dispose of, to, for rental, then they're gonna get, uh, it's gonna get higher, so.
I'm sure there'll be a lot more after last night's conversation.
Yeah.
Seven o'clock, seven o'clock, please.
So we, we will be moving forward with, with the tub grinder article and, and the, uh, there's some, some increased expense for our solid waste removal, some increased tonnage. We've seen, seen an increase in, in our curbside tonnage, most likely due to COVID and more people being homeless like that, so. I believe that was roughly around $12,000.
It's far changed, yeah.
So anyway, uh, number two there, the reopening procedures and policies for library, prime time and schools.
Library and prime time haven't changed. The schools are eye-opening, to say the least. Bristol Banky has been open for a couple of weeks. They're doing very well, the kids have adapted very well to the wearing masks, sitting down, collecting glass for lunch, the six feet of yard, and everybody's doing their thing. It's been pretty quiet over there. Dyne Elementary School is hopefully opening on Tuesday. They are struggling with finding space and tables and chairs in order to make everything fit in the cafeterias and the rooms and all the rest of it. I was there today for two and a half hours, a question and answer, with, with the teachers and staff to try and, you know, alleviate concerns and everything. There's a lot of concern with how things are gonna happen, what kind of council's fees and et cetera, et cetera. The sanitation expert was there, um, and he explained to them why are we using this one and that one, and this one during the day, and this one at night and all that. So we believe we were able to make them feel more comfortable about what's going on. But that was only like ten of the teachers. So we're going back next Friday and doing it again with the entire school, um, teachers. But there's still a lot of concern, the desks too close, if the kids are gonna be eating and, you know, what happens if a kid sneezes and there's masks, you know, it's a lot of stuff like that. Hopefully we can work through it, they start on Tuesday and we'll see where it goes from there. So I expect there to be some bumps in the road, but hopefully everybody can, uh, figure out how it works. Your classroom and your kids, and you can figure out yours and then we can all work together. We either reading at our desk or using the death material, and so. We'll see, but next week should be a wonderful week.
And I was really good that you did that. A lot of times, when we don't sit in front of people, they have a bunch of questions and I, I was really applaud you for doing that, so it's good.
Well, the same, we had the same problem, um, the construction side over there for St. Aggie. It seemed like the, the workers, all the information wasn't floating down. We're having the same problem now, and CDC might send something out, but the DPH doesn't necessarily send it down. And so it's, it's not trickling down all the way. And the same thing's happening with the teachers. They're not necessarily getting the information because the people above them are getting the information from DESI or from DPH. So just getting a question answered, getting the information and being told, yes, you're right, or maybe you're wrong, but here's why, seems to go a long way with making people feel bad, so.
I think earlier in September, some of the DESI guidance didn't match the DPH guidance. I think that's been resolved now. So it's new for everybody. It's a lot to understand, a lot to figure out. Every day is a new adventure with COVID. Certainly all, all the new reopenings. Now, you know, we're in phase three, step two, provided we don't, you know, we don't go into the red for three consecutive weeks.
We did up to the yellow.
So a lot, a lot of communities bumped up to, to a yellow.
I believe we currently have five cases, so.
Sorry, I cut you off.
No, 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 I'm just, no, just five cases, I think.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
Oh, so no, that was it for the schools, is, we'll see where it goes, but next week should be interesting.
For sure.
So you're looking, I'll add, I'll add a couple of things. The big three, fire department, myself and Agent Hilling will be going through all schools next week. We have that planned. We leave the fire chief may try to do some fire drills in the next week or two as well. So we're staying on top of that. The library will not reopen, the fire chief and I have made that clear, until we address some of the spatial issues and the secondary means of egress. My understanding that there is a warrant article on a special town meeting for $105,000 that will address the second means of egress from the main level only. A fully compliant accessory restroom. We have not discussed the spatial problems in the building because adding a handicap bathroom will actually create less space. So I still think this thing is gonna play out for a very long time. COVID does have some playing in it, but moreover, the concerns that the fire chief and I have with the building itself is going to probably take precedent. And I believe the last time we discussed COA was that we weren't gonna revisit it until December.
Well, they're not gonna be allowed to open till phase four anyway, so.
So, and even at that, we decided as a community, we're gonna discuss it. So I would see that happen anytime soon, I bet.
They've been doing programs under the pavilion, they have some exercise programs and whatever. So obviously, when it gets cold, they might be doing it in a different location. So maybe possibly here, but obviously that's, we're not there yet.
It'd be very, very limited, only a few people out of time, I'm sure. Very low, low-key activity type, a low, low activity.
Republican part?
I don't have any for everybody who have a question, something we might, depending on the answer, we may wanna consider discussing this at our next meeting. Is, um, just curious if Attorney Mitchell had contacted our board about moving forward with a follow-up inspection with Wilson on Shop Stop Road. They had agreed to it, but what seems to have a problem hooking up. And they did authorize that Attorney Mitchell, or the owner did authorize Attorney Mitchell could do it with us, but two attempts for us and we still.
When Attorney Mitchell last got back to us, he stated that Mr. Wilson had given him permission to meet us and to walk there, but he was leaving on vacation. That when he got back from vacation, he would be in touch, but I haven't heard anything. It's been a little bit.
Could you reach out one more time? And if you don't have time, we'll, we'll put it on our agenda for next meeting, what we're gonna do.
Okay.
Kevin?
Okay, I don't have anything.
Just gonna quick mention Halloween, that, um, it's, it's not, this board's call, I guess, is a cancel trick-or-treating. Um, and I would advise against canceling trick-or-treating, more or less, in the traditional sense. If he, if, if trick-or-treating is allowed, I would strongly suggest that you consider modifications to ensure social distancing, um, limit the groups that you're with. Maybe try to keep it within your household or, or family. Uh, if you're passing out candy, maybe try to, um, you know, le- leave a bowl, you know, outside, you know. If you are gonna stay outside, you know, try to stay, you know, six or more feet away from that bowl. Maybe goody bags that you put out instead, um, individually. If you are refilling that bowl with candy or whatnot, wash your hands, use hand sanitizer. If you're out trick-or-treating, frequently use hand sanitizer. As a reminder, costume masks generally are not proper face coverings. So, um, you know, maybe instead use like a Halloween themed type, um, you know, facial cloth covering instead of a, a costume mask. So just, just keep that in mind. And, and at all costs, please avoid attending and/or hosting Halloween parties. Certainly indoor parties, in my experience recently, have led to an increase in, in COVID cases. So please avoid indoor parties. That's, that's all I have on Halloween. I think we'll, we'll put some, some type of memo together regarding Halloween and, and other alternatives beyond, you know, trick-or-treating parties that, that are low risk and moderate risk and high risk based on CDC's guidance. Just to try and get that message out. That's all I have. Uh, inspectors' reports?
COVID, occupying a lot of my time. We're getting crushed on the septic end of things. Perk applications have come in, asking various types of lies, obviously a lot of houses selling, even new houses, new construction seems to be. I'm not scheduling one or two perks in a week because between Board of Health meetings, storm line meetings, emergency threat meetings, I can call the dump calls and everything else. I felt that in my 25 hours a week, 'cause I hope they can do one or two perks a week, it's not conducive to getting work done. So right now, we're scheduling it in November. And we're trying, it seems like every day, um, making people angry with telling if they can't do something or telling how long they have to wait, or telling how they need to do something. So it's just, it's been difficult. But other than that, life goes on.
If you have a few extra plans or Title V reports that I could take off your hands, I'll help you out.
Okay. Yeah, actually, I haven't got too many plans coming, it's been the first Sunday, um, and so, but now we, um, we've got some equipment, um, if you remember a few meetings ago, um, Board authorized expenses for equipment. And so now, as our inspection comes in, we go out and make sure that cargo is brought to grade and, and that kind of thing, and make sure that they did actually dig up the components, 'cause they don't always seem to dig them up. But, yeah.
Which I think is important because if you have regulations, it should be enforced, 'cause not everybody follows the rules.
It's true.
So thank you for that. So yes, we have a lot going on. Seem to be managing mine end very well, although it consumes every minute of every day. I am a little behind on the force productions. That said, there are two more letters that will be going out next week that I will be working with Agent Hilling on directly, therefore campers on properties similar to the one you brought up earlier on Shop Stop Road. We have two other properties in town that seem to be doing the same thing. So, um, good thing is we have the templates already in the computer. We just have to verify that it's still ongoing and then those orders will be going out next week. I tried to get them out this week, it just didn't happen, so. Wait, I did send one out today.
You did, did one out today.
Hey, I sent one out today.
It'll be constant.
Okay, good. So I sent one out today via constant, so maybe we'll get some action on that. Other than that, um, we, I, I echoed Todd's sentiments. All those perks seem to be slow, there's no good soil out there anymore. We did have a call from the police department this afternoon for a possible dischage of Chris's house. Uh, we did go down there, we did solidify that there is a problem. They had a pump truck come down right away and we now have to follow up on that next week amongst everything else, so it just, it just.
It might be the whole of that.
It just keeps going on and on, so. And we're doing the best we can.
Can't ask for any more than that.
Correspondence?
I'm sorry.
Correspondence?
Nope. Nope. And I apologize when it's.
Nope, that's fine. Approval events, we will wait on that since we haven't had a chance to read them. We got to page one.
I just got it right now.
Sorry, no page two, I'm sorry. Anything else?
No, well, these are different than the C Ds, correct?
Oh, yeah, that was the wrong big.
The data option, why?
Oh, I didn't realize.
Yeah. Do you have a motion to table?
Eight A?
Eight A, the minutes was September tenth.
Second. I forgot where I was.
Motion, motion to table approval, but that's any other discussion. All in favor?
All right.
Post. Good?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
Write the time to adjourn.
Uh, motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Your adjourn, thank you, cable.
Thank you, guys.
Next meeting.
Sorry, that was last minute.
You know what time we are starting?
Yeah, I do because I was on there on Zoom.
Eleven o'clock.
What's happening, eleven?
He's done at six.
We were supposed to be on at seven. An hour and a half parking lot, changing his speed limit sign to twenty hours an hour.
Not long. They talked about your thing the other day with the two and a half percent. I was so mad.
It's not working out.
They denied. You know, and it's worse under the bus, I was telling. It's not, they break you lucky, they're like, it's not harsh. It's, it's his board for putting this in. I could have broke my own TV.
But Stacy got hurt two and a half percent. We did it the exact same way.
I literally could have broke my TV the other day.
Yeah, we watched that. We, it, it was, yeah.
Never mind that shit. Check this out.
Yeah, look at this. How awesome is that?
Oh, man, I could have charged myself. Shut the front door.
They never even commented on it last night.
Unbelievable.
I'm talking about women.
Isn't that cool? And the TV, like.
Did Gash tell that?
I did see the TV, yeah.
So we could, we're not so big fans of the meeting, right?
Are we going to get out of that thing?
It's all yours, please.
Thank you so much. We can move chairs however we want.
Whatever you want.
Just don't grab them across the floor. You can move them however.
Okay, thank you.
Don't build any permits there.
Make yourself comfortable. Don't spend the night, okay?
Oh, wow, what a night.
Yeah, and then it'll all lock automatically. Don't worry about it.
Oh, really?
Just go out and it'll lock automatically.
Okay, well, just make sure we check it and that.
Oh, no, 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 no. It'll lock automatically. So just go out, just make sure it closes and then.
All right, well, there's a lot of people coming.